All right, let's get started this evening. Good evening, everybody. As per the usual, we will go through a short introduction for tonight's meeting so everybody understands what's going to, how we're going to proceed, and then we'll get started. So, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled September 26 meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, Chairman of the Commission. And for tonight, for the benefit of those in the audience, I'm joined by Commissioner Rebecca Holman, Mike Slifka, Anna Madskill, Tim Moran, Commissioner Mim Evans, City Attorney Ron Sadak, Director of Community Development David DeGroot, City Planner Matt Busing, and Assistant Planner Jesse Muncy. This evening, the Commission will host a public hearing on agendas 5A and 5B. As Chairman of tonight's meeting, I will guide the public and applicant in the Commission through the public hearing process, which is outlined in the back of the agenda. Please see this page for further details. The Commission will open the public hearing, and staff will present a summary of their report. The applicant will then provide an opening statement and a brief overview of the requests. Commission members will have an opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by public comment and testimony regarding the requests. Audience members will be called upon and given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name, and when it is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made and your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. We remind members of the public to refrain from bearing off-topic and direct comments that are relevant to the requests being considered. Following the end of public testimony, applicant will have an opportunity to comprehensively answer questions or respond to any comments made from members of the public. Additional questions or comments may then be stated by the Commission. The public hearing may then be closed by the Commission deliberation on the separate requests. In order to help with the quality of the meeting broadcast, I would remind all Commissioners to mute themselves except when they are addressing the Commission. Commissioners are also encouraged to name, to state their name prior to speaking and prior to providing a roll call vote to better assist our record keepers, for example, Stocking, Y, and A, or State. Okay? Any questions? Okay. If you wish to speak or present testimony at the tonight's meeting, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. If anyone is going to give testimony in front of the Commission, please stand. Okay. Do you swear to tell truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thank you. You may be seated. All right, Anna, please call the roll.
Me. Evans.
Evans here.
Slifka.
Slifka here.
Holman.
Holman here.
Madskill.
Madskill here.
Moran.
Moran here.
Stocking.
Stocking. Okay. Next item is approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Move to approve, Evans?
Second.
Moran?
Move to second, and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post. Next item is approval of the minutes of the September 12, 2024 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes of the September 12, 2024 meeting, Slifka?
Madskill, second.
Move to second, and all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Post. All right. So we'll move on to the public hearing items. First public hearing item is 5A. It's a text amendment for food manufacturing, processing, and packaging. The zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Section 11-7B-2 permitted uses to allow food manufacturing, processing, and packaging as permitted use in the I-1 light industrial zoning district. The applicant is MSI Express, Inc. Matt, you have some things for the record.
Yes. So, the contents of this file include the application for a zoning ordinance text amendment filed by MSI Express, Inc., dated August 20, 2024. It includes the project narrative, the certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on September 11, 2024, for tonight's public hearing, the public comment dated September 20, 2024, and September 25, 2024, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated September 26, 2024.
Thank you very much. Jesse, you have a short little presentation on this item.
Hello. My name is Jesse Muncy. I'm the Assistant City Planner here. And what we've started to do at these meetings is have the planners give a short summary of the staff report. For the people in the audience and for everyone here, just as a quick summary. So, this is the food manufacturing text amendment, staff report summary. The applicant is MSI Express Incorporated. The location for this text amendment is all properties in the I-1 district, outlined there. And the request is a zoning text amendment. The text amendment is to allow food manufacturing, processing, and packaging as permitted use in the I-1 light industrial zoning district. So, MSI Express, the applicant, is a manufacturing and packaging company specializing in food manufacturing, processing, and packaging. The applicant is considering leasing 1885 East State Street, zoned I-1, but the I-1 district does not allow for these use, for this use as a permitted use. Use is limited to the I-2 zoning district, but we don't have very many properties in that zoning district. Whereas now, several PUDs in the I-1 district already have included food manufacturing operations as permitted uses. The existing heavy presence of food manufacturing uses in the I-1 district may signify that food manufacturing, processing, and packaging is a suitable permitted use. And you can see there on that map, that is north of the 1885 East State Street, so a little pointer here. That is, am I correct in saying that's, okay, yeah, that's the property that MSI is looking at? And then, all of these are in different PUDs, and they are, they all allow for food manufacturing, processing, and packaging as permitted use. So, that is the short staff presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I don't know if the applicant has any presentation of their own. Wrong applicant.
Yep. Please come forward.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mike Bosley. I'm the Vice President of Operations and Supply Chain at MSI Express. I just wanted to give you guys a quick overview while we're looking to do this. So, we currently operate two factories in the area, one in Batavia and one in West Chicago, right on the other side of the airport. And that, that building on the other side of the airport, we currently do things like cake mixes, and crackers, and candy, and sunflower seeds. We take those things that are already made, and we put them into packages. And then, we also do some, we'll blend like some pancake mix, and powder drink mix, and so forth. We don't do any cooking, so I know some, some folks were worried about smells and whatnot. We don't cook any product. We don't handle any meat or anything like that. It's all things like, like I spoke to. But we've outgrown that building in West Chicago, and we're just going to move that operation over to this building if we can get it allowed to make food.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant? Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay. No one wishes to speak on this matter? Okay. All right. Yes, Mim?
I have a question to staff.
This time? I could do that?
Yeah. Yeah.
We should probably close the public hearing first.
Oh, close it. Move to close the public hearing?
I have a, I'm sorry. I have a question for the applicant.
Oh, you have a question for the applicant? Okay. I'm sorry. You just got to yell at me.
I wasn't being very assertive. I was just curious about the transportation in and out, and how the products then get moved, and what that looks like as far as truck traffic and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, good question. So, we get into our West Chicago facility today about 35, between inbound trucks and outbound trucks, about 35 trucks a day. And so, the trucks will bring in, like, for example, sunflowers, sunflower seeds in a real big bag, and we'll unload them off the truck, and then we'll put them into pouches. And then, once they're in boxes for the grocery store, we'll put them back on a truck and ship them out.
Okay. So, you don't have a lot of, there's no food waste that has to be dealt with as far as, you're saying, you, all the products are already prepared? There's no?
There's some, there is some food waste, but we take that, and we actually send it to a recycler.
Okay. So, everything is, there's, everything's taken care of? There's no waste that stays on site?
Oh, that stays on, no.
Yeah.
No. Yeah, we send, any kind of food waste we would have, we have an agreement with the recycler, and then they take it, and then they recycle it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Could we leave the public hearing open and still ask a question of staff in case that generated a question for the applicant?
Sure. Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. Then I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, the interesting thing here is that this affects so many other locations within the, within the city, rather than just looking at whether or not this particular site would be appropriate for this use. We have to consider that whether or not all the other sites that would be affected would be appropriate for this type of use, correct? That's an issue.
Yeah, it's a zoning district. Yeah.
So, I was wondering if staff could give us some background on why this is the best route for allowing this use on the site as opposed to rezoning it? So, it was in the district where it would be a use by right?
Yeah, I think typically, we, we've tried to avoid just, you know, spot zoning, just rezoning of single parcels. And for this particular case, I think we found that there were a lot of food manufacturing uses already in the I-1 district. It seemed like maybe, you know, it was a use that should be included in the I-1 district just by right as a permitted use, considering how many facilities are already in operation.
So, those facilities that are already in operation in the I-1 district, how are they operating if this is not a permitted use?
So, so these specific ones, if you look at the map here, excluding the one that's kind of called out on the northwest corner there, all of those are included in planning and developments.
Okay.
That expressly included that use.
All right. No, that makes sense then. Okay.
The, the one in the northwest corner is closer to, I think it's just south of South Street, kind of on Gary Lane. It's like a candy manufacturer.
I know that one, yes.
Yeah, I know.
It smells really good.
I don't know, I don't know why it was promoted there, but it was probably in the past at some point, and it's been there for a while, so.
It's been there a while.
Yes. Okay. So then, my question is, my next question, of the other sites that would be affected by this change, are there any for which staff has a concern about that change occurring, that it might be inappropriate?
Not to, I mean, not to my knowledge. I think majority of the I-1 district is any location that is separated from residential. There are some that are kind of sporadically spread out. If you went back to the other map, you could kind of see there's some kind of west of, of the river.
Yeah.
But I don't think there's too much concern. I mean, there's always a level of unknown, but I think for the majority of I-1 sites, this use would, would be a justified permitted use.
And, I'm sorry to be asking so many questions, but the concern seems to be odors that might come from food processing. Would it be possible to change it but prohibit cooking? I guess gentleman said that they, or meat, or whatever it is that makes it a particularly smelly process.
Yeah.
I mean, what he's describing sounds like it would not be objectionable, but if somebody else wants to make hot dogs, that could be different.
Right. I mean, I think, I think that could be added into it. We do have, the zoning ordinance does have regulations on odor control and noise control, so any use that comes into the I-1 district or any industrial site has to meet those regulations. If they are not, they would, you know, be found out of, or nonconforming, and would need to comply with those regulations. And those are in place too, for instances like this, where uses may have odors or noise issues.
So, that level of control you feel would be enough to prevent it from being a problem?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anna? Oh, Anna, and then, okay, go ahead.
So, correct me if I'm not using the right terminology, instead of changing the zoning, the text in the zoning, the idea of using like a special use permit, am I using that terminology where it would only apply to a specific address? It wouldn't be throughout the zone?
Correct.
Is that something that has been considered, or?
It is something that has been considered, I think from staff's perspective. So, the zoning ordinance has, you know, for each zoning district, there's a list of permitted uses and special uses. I think in this instance, we've seen there's quite a number of them already that have been allowed kind of through a special use process, and we haven't really seen too much of an issue with it. So, I think in this instance, the use appears to make sense to be a permitted use, rather than having, you know, every food manufacturer come through the special use process.
Yeah, I guess it just, you know, leaving the, the gates open just makes me a little nervous about some of the things that, that were concerning for other people, because some of the, the L-1 sites are in, you know, close to residential areas, so I, I wouldn't be opposed to, to keeping that like as, as a special use permit, just, just for that reason. So, there still is some, you know, some guardrails on there for, but, okay. Thank you.
Anna?
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to be rude, but
Sure.
We're out of order here. I think we have to close a public hearing and then go into discussion phase.
Okay.
We left it open for Mim's question, which I, has not generated any.
Okay.
So, I think we need to move on.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to close the public hearing. Evans?
Moran, second.
Move to second, and Anna, please call the roll.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
Holman?
Holman, aye.
Madskill?
Madskill, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye. Okay. Anna?
So, I guess, along the same lines, can you speak to what's on those parcels that are west of the river that are in the I-1 district? Like, what's on there currently?
I mean, I don't have a extensive list right on me of all the uses there.
I guess my biggest concern, and you spoke to it a little bit, is about like the noise, the pollution, those sorts of things. My concern with having those parcels being closer proximity to downtown and more housing is whatever's there, if it turns over, and there's a, a meatpacking facility, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and there, so specific uses like that, and I tried to mention this in the report, there are specific uses that the zoning ordinance expressly prohibits, like meat, I think like slaughterhouses are expressly prohibited. I mean, if we wanted to include something in this use that says, you know, excluding meatpacking plants, that could be added in. As I mentioned, obviously, the, the regulations include noise and odor control, you know, to try to help limit that.
And how are those parcels allowed to be, what, I guess, never mind. I guess the question was what they're current, what they're currently doing on those facilities, but you said you don't have really knowledge of those areas, so that, that's all I have on that topic.
Your question is what industrial uses do we have that are not in the industrial parks that are more in the downtown area?
Yeah, exactly. What's currently residing there?
Well, we have Burgess Norton, obviously, north and south campuses.
Yeah.
We have closer to Randall and Kestler there. We have like the U-Haul Storage, Silvestri Suites, some contractors' offices and storage yards along Gary Lane there.
And they're allowed, whatever they're doing on their, on their site is allowed under the I-1 district?
Correct. And then, as Matt mentioned, we do have performance standards in the zoning ordinance that do address things like odor and noise. We have had to enforce those in my experience here with the city. We've had to tackle that a few times, including odor. I think one of, one of our considerations as well, besides there being existing food packaging and processing facilities in the I-1 district, is that that's, that's really a strength that we have. We have an existing cluster of food-oriented industrial uses, and we tend to attract that, those types of uses for that reason. And given the amount of land that we recently annexed and zoned I-1 light industrial, this might set that up for success as well.
For additional same, similar use
Right.
of the land.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Tim?
My concern is, is along the same lines as Commissioner Holman and Commissioner Evans, which is that I don't feel this is the appropriate way to do this. The I-1 and the I-2 exist, I assume, and were created for specific purposes, and the prohibition against one activity being in one was put in there for a specific reason, notwithstanding the protections against smell, which are built into 11-4-4, but it doesn't seem to me that the ease, which it puts on city staff in getting this done, justifies opening the door to an entire new category of uses in this district. I think a special use permit, or spot zoning, or an amendment to the PUD, I think is more appropriate, would draw more attention, would bring more people in to ask serious questions. And I just don't think the text amendment is the right way to do this. It just makes the entire I-2 district a paper tiger. There's a distinction with no difference between I-1 and I-2 if we change the text of I-1 to include this language.
And just, just to that too, I think, I think the difficulty that I think staff was having when trying to figure out how to process this is the I-2 district is so small in Geneva that there's really nowhere any business could go for those uses. Everything is, everything that we've zoned in the industrial district, 99% of our industrial land is I-1. And so, I think there's maybe some questions of, you know, what uses should be included in the I-1 district, this being one of them.
Thank you. Yes, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't get it the same way. I think that, obviously, where, where it seemed to make sense, the process has allowed food processing to come into the I-1, I-1 zoning, so, but it's been done, obviously, in a thoughtful way, through, in most cases, through a PUD. A lot of these uses appear to have clustered in one area, which suggests there may be some synergy there versus, versus other locations. So, I, I think it, I think it's prudent to, to have some, some type of second look at, at putting a food facility in, in an I-1 district.
Yes, ma'am.
What are the other options? I mean, can this be, how can we set this up? I mean, I would certainly like to facilitate this project and other food processing to come into the city, but I do feel like there should be some opportunity for review to ensure that, that the use isn't going to be disruptive to any of the surrounding area. And the, the areas on the west side are pretty close to some residential areas. I mean, Gary Lane, very close to Eagle Brook, you know, if there were odors, whatever, there, it seems to me they would be quite susceptible to them. So, what are the other options for us that you see as, as possibilities other than, than this? Because I'd like to find a way to make it work, but I'm not sure this is the way.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think as Rebecca mentioned, there's, obviously, you could, you could do it as a special use, if that's something that the Commission is interested in. You could, I mean, if you wanted to keep it as a permitted use, you could include exceptions to it, but it sounds like you want to have some sort of special use process where it's coming back to the Commission, which would lead you to us, you know, recommending this as a special use.
I think that would be preferable to outright banning more uses, because there may be something, I mean, this is a, geographically, a broad district. There's stuff on, on both extremes of town, and some uses that might be perfectly fine over on the east side, where it's surrounded by other industrial, might not be appropriate on the west side. So, I would, I would be hesitant to say, you can do everything, but, you know, add to the list of prohibited things, because that isn't necessarily true everywhere. So, to me, a special use where anything could be considered, well, as it's written now, you know, could be considered, would be better for the city and better for applicants, that they would know that there was the opportunity. I realize it's, it is more work for staff, more things that have to come through the process, but I think in this instance, that's worthwhile, and that neighboring residential areas would appreciate that it was coming in for review.
House?
Rebecca? I would agree with you, ma'am. I mean, I, I think that we're kind of saying the same thing. I, I would be in favor of a special use permit. I support the idea of the business coming in, but I do think that there should be some additional oversight for just not an open field, so.
Mike?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, I, when I look at this, at this business, what they do, this location, this building, I'd have no problem with it, but I don't know that I feel like by approving this, I'm comfortable approving it everywhere.
Yeah. 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 Now, I would agree. I think, I think we do need a review session with the public hearing to tear stuff out, so I think it makes sense.
Mr. Chairman, is this the correct time to make a motion, then?
I believe so. Anybody else have anything else to say? All right.
In keeping with our tradition of making a motion in the positive, I would move to approve the applicant's request for zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Section 11-7B-2 permitted uses to allow food manufacturing, processing, and packaging as a permitted use in the I-1 light industrial zoning district.
I think we should probably just say as a special use.
Yeah, you can make the motion for a special use, I mean, because that language still needs to be put in the ordinance. So, Tim, if you wanted to do that, that would be in the affirmative, and I think there seems to be concurrence.
That would be good. That's much more, that saves this gentleman coming back, well, he still ended up coming back, but
Right.
it would make this evening productive. We'd have something.
We'd have something out of here.
Right. That's good.
Do I have to change my motion, Ron?
You do.
Why don't you add the magic language for me?
Just have one phrase, Mim.
To allow food manufacturing, processing, and packaging as a special use in the I-1 light industrial zoning district. Subject to, subject to staff findings of fact.
Second, Evans?
Move down second. Anna, please call the roll.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
Holman?
Holman, aye.
Madskill?
Madskill, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye. All right. Anna, next up, so this?
Okay, so that recommendation will go to the City Council to approve it as a special use. I'll, I'll email you guys tomorrow, and we can discuss kind of steps going forward for that, and when the date is for the City Council meeting.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Next item on the agenda, it's a public hearing, item 5B. It's Geneva Crossing Townhomes. It's a request for rezoning of lots 2 through 4, I think 2 through 4, huh? To allow for a secondary use of multifamily development without an age restriction, and two, final planned unit development, and three, final plat of subdivision for a proposed 48-unit townhome development. The applicant is Covenant Construction and Company and Geneva Crossing LLC Lexington Homes. The location is generally located east of Fisher Drive and south of Williamsburg Avenue. The pins are 12-05-405-001, 002, and 006. Matt, the record.
All right. So, the contents of this file include an application for a zoning map amendment filed by Covenant Construction Co. dated April 25, 2024, and applications for final planned unit development and final plat of subdivision approval filed by Geneva Crossing LLC Lexington Homes dated May 3, 2024. It includes the project narratives and a supplemental narrative, the development schedule, a response to the zoning map amendment standards, a natural resources inventory application, and Illinois State Historic Preservation
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next item on the agenda, it's a public hearing, item 5B. It's Geneva Crossing Townhomes. It's a request for rezoning of lots 2 through 4, I think 2, 4, huh? To allow for a secondary use of multifamily development without an age restriction. And two, final planned unit development. And three, final plat of subdivision for a proposed 48-unit townhome development. The applicant is Covenant Construction and Company and Geneva Crossing LLC Lexington Homes. The location is generally located east of Fisher Drive and south of Williamsburg Avenue. The pins are 12-05-405-001, 002, and 006. Matt, the record.
All right, so the contents of this file include an application for a zoning map amendment filed by Covenant Construction Co. dated April 25, 2024, and applications for final planned unit development and final plat of subdivision approval filed by Geneva Crossing LLC Lexington Homes dated May 3, 2024. It includes the project narratives and a supplemental narrative, the development schedule, a response to the zoning map amendment standards, a natural resources inventory application, an Illinois State Historic Preservation Office letter dated April 4, 2024, an IDNR ECO CAP permit, an FAA determination of no hazard to air navigation dated May 31, 2024, a FAA memo to the City of Geneva dated August 7, 2024, correspondence with Kane County over the road impact fee, correspondence with Kane County regarding stormwater management exemption, the declaration for Geneva Crossing Townhomes, plat of re-subdivision coordination exhibit, the planned unit development site plan, the final plat of subdivision and planned unit development, the architectural elevations and floor plans, the model unit sales trailer and temporary entrance plan, the final landscape plan and the model and sales pod landscape plan, the tree location exhibit, site improvement plans, ALTA survey, a site lighting coordination exhibit, topographic exhibit, impervious area comparison exhibit, the vehicle turn-in exhibit, the storm sewer calculations, traffic study, and then we have the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property and the affidavit attesting to the accuracy of said list, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on September 11, 2024, for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, public comment dated May 18, 2024, and finally, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planned Zoning Commission dated September 26, 2024.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll hear from the applicant. Oh, I'm sorry. Just one second, we have to hear from staff. I forget about the staff reports. Something new.
Oh, I got to log in again. Hold on a sec. Password on my phone? Give the password back? Oh, you have to do this. How should I do this?
She's got it.
All right. So, again, this is just a short summary of the staff report, but this time for the Geneva Crossing Townhomes project. The applicant's are Covenant Construction Company for the rezoning application, Geneva Crossing LLC for the final PUD and subdivision. There's the location right there. The requests are the rezoning, final plat of subdivision, and a final planned unit development for lots 2, 3, and 4 in the crossings at Geneva subdivision. These are the zoning and land uses for the property and the surrounding properties. So, the subject property is zone R7, multiple-family residential district. The land use is multi-family senior living. To the north, it's the B2 district, which doesn't exist anymore, but that was in the Delnor PUD, and so that's memorialized in the Delnor PUD. It's vacant land currently, though. The south is the OR Office Research District, also in the Delnor Community Hospital PUD Hospital. The east, it is OR Office Research District, Delnor, land uses hospital. And to the west, it's the RR Rural Residential and R3, medium-to-high-density, single-family residential districts. And there is the Federal Aviation Administration, the FAA, and single-family residential. For the zoning map amendment, the petition is to rezone for the secondary use identified in ordinance 9627. So, for background on that, the crossings at Geneva subdivision was annexed through ordinance 9725 as a part of, oh, I think, I think I made a mistake, the first ordinance. I think the ordinance is 9625, yes, that's the, forget the 9627 one.
27 is the PUD ordinance.
Oh, it is a PUD. Okay, sorry. That's the correct one. Sorry about that. The subdivision was known as Neighborhood 9, and the zoning and land use approved by the city for Neighborhood 9 was approved for both a primary use as well as a secondary use, which is sort of different than what we usually see. So, the primary use was 250 senior living dwelling units for 55 and older. The secondary use was non-age-restricted multifamily development. In the PUD, it said, and this is summarized here, if development on Neighborhood 9 was not initiated within two years of 09627, sorry about that, the owner could petition the city to rezone it for the secondary use. So, what happened? Development on the crossings at Geneva began with ordinance 0348, and that was seven years after the original ordinance. So, more than two years after the original ordinance, that means the owner could petition the city to rezone it for the secondary use. This isn't really a rezoning because it is the same zoning, but through the PUD, it says you have to quote-unquote "rezone it." So, we have to go through this process. But according to our zoning map amendment standards, or for the rezoning, it does meet all of the map amendment standards. Now for the final plat of subdivision. Existing lots 2, 3, and 4 will be resubdivided into lots 1 through 10 and outlots A through F, the common areas. There will be no change to the zoning of the lots. The 10 lots meet the minimum requirements as per Section 11-7B-4, lot and area requirements. The proposed subdivision plans for public utilities, which will be dedicated to the city of Geneva, the lots will use the existing Stone Circle, a private road for ingress and egress. Trees and sidewalks would be installed along the stretch of Stone Circle Drive, which would let the new lots. And then for the final planned unit development, just summary, it meets all of our standards as summarized by staff. So, that is staff summary. Now, I'll pull up the applicant's PowerPoint.
Great, thank you, Jess. All right, now we'll hear from the applicant. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Day. I'm the attorney for both Lexington as well as Covenant, and I have the privilege of representing them both with respect to the request for the secondary zoning on this particular project, as well as the application for a planned unit development for the 40 townhomes and a directly related subdivision of the property. The applicant's team includes Lexington. Nate Weinsma is here, and he will make the principal presentation regarding the townhome plan. Covenant Construction is my client. They're the owner of the property and originally started this particular project some, nearly 25 years ago. And they are seeking the rezoning of the parcel as they are the contract owner and seller of the property. Lexington is a contract purchaser contingent upon getting their zoning for this particular project. My name is Scott Day. I'm the attorney for the project. I'm with the firm of Day &amp; Robert PC out of Naperville. Both Todd Schaefer and Tom Jasek are working with Hager Engineering. They have been the planning staff as well as the engineering staff. They've worked extensively with your particular team to work through the design standards and make sure we're in compliance with the way that you want these particular projects set up. Loa Abuna and Brendan May are the traffic engineers for this project. Brendan May is here this evening if you have questions on traffic, and he will speak to you briefly in the presentation. Doug Shannon and Carl Peterson have done all the landscape work on this particular project, and because this is a planned unit development, you get to see everything. The building materials, the landscaping plan, the architectural plan, the elevations, the floor plans, you get to basically pour through everything on this particular project because that's the way planned unit developments are processed. The teams are, as reflected with their logos here, this property, as your staff indicated, is part of a very, very large, in excess of 400-acre planned unit development that was brought into the city almost 30 years ago. So, this was set up and brought in as one massive unit, and zoning for the entire project was done all in 1996. Each of the individual neighborhoods were given assigned uses, and it was a mixed unit plan that brought in multi-levels of residential development, commercial development. The engineering was done, and our project was known as Neighborhood 9. You can see where it's situated in the plan. Visually today, you can see that a portion of the project was built out, and you can see the three condo buildings that are there, as well as a connecting corridor. And then you can also see the massive expansion of Delnor Hospital there, a very notable facility here in the area, and one of the most growing land uses that you can find anywhere in metropolitan Chicagoland. There's an explosion of medical office use and medical office growth. I think it's a factor of the demographic that so many people are my age and they're in need of their doctors. So, that has been a real growth industry throughout the United States and in particular in metropolitan Chicagoland. Zoning request number one is exclusively from the property owner, that's Covenant Construction, and they are asking for that secondary land use. This is probably the most unusual rezoning application that I've ever confronted because I've never had a municipality that has actually assigned two different legislative designations for the zoning of the property. So, this is an R7 parcel of property. We are not seeking to change the zoning. The only difference is the primary land use was supposed to be for citizens that were 55 years and older, and if that didn't develop, then we could ask for the secondary use, which was just R7, which is a multifamily. When we brought this up with your staff, even before we came before you for our concept presentation, your staff said, don't put these things in two different public hearings. Said, connect these two together. Let the plan commission and let city council see this as a package together. If we were to simply apply the R7 zoning to this parcel, which we could request, there's a whole host of use that could be put to this parcel. Your staff, I think, correctly indicated that both you and city council would want to see how the proposed use and architecture and landscaping would fit in with the uses that are already there. We've made the accommodation, and we've delayed the request for the secondary zoning to make sure that it is dovetailed, but they are two separate applications this evening. Historically, the zoning, as was indicated by your staff, was both primary and secondary, and the secondary land use included this clause that allowed for this particular application if the development didn't occur. You can see that the subdivision was approved back in 2003. So, we're talking about work that was essentially done more than two decades ago. And the condo that was approved for this particular project, you can see where those lots are situated in relationship to these buildings and how they situated in sort of a surrounding component. This subdivision was approved in ordinance 200348, and it was for, originally, I believe it was 240 condominiums. It was revised down to 222 condominiums. Only 90-some of those units were built. We've got approximately 132, 132 that have never been constructed. So, the actual condo development was less than half of the density that was approved for this particular project. Timing was not ideal. You'll recall that there were certain headwinds that were confronted by all of the residential real estate markets in 2007 and 2008. There was a major reversal and a collapse. I think one of the areas that was probably hardest hit coming out of the 2008 collapse of residential markets was condominiums. Interest rates were a problem. Condominium ownership was difficult at that particular time, and financing the projects became difficult. It has continued to be difficult. Condo development has lagged behind many of the other residential markets in recent history. Lots 2, 3, and 4 remain undeveloped 21 years later, but they are zoned R7. So, zoning request number one is to impose the zoning imposed by the 1996 ordinance for multifamily residential R7 without the age restriction. And that age restriction's an unusual one. As it was actually recorded, they did require that at least one of the residents that moved in had to be 55 years of age when the project was opened. Thereafter, you didn't have to have a 55-year-old resident in that particular unit. Children 19 years and older were permitted in the age-restricted housing, but you could only have up to 20% of their residents that were not in that particular, one of those two categories. So, it was a relatively complex formula for the age restriction. The standards for the zoning request number one, we've put that into our written submittal. I don't want to belabor that. You're used to people reading them. I don't want to do that. If you want me to, I will do that for the record, but I simply ask that you adopt the standards as they were written. They're in the staff report extensively with respect to this zoning request. I guess this is the second one. The second zoning request is for a final planned unit development for the balance of this particular parcel. That's also part of the Farmington planned unit development. We've got multi-stages for this. Farmington as a whole was processed as a planned unit development, so our neighborhood has a planned unit development. And then when you adopted and approved the condominiums, they were not a planned unit development. They were simply straight zoning in the R7 district with the primary use. We're seeking an amendment to the planned unit, or a final planned unit development for our portion of this neighborhood within this particular project. Zoning request number two and three asks that the written responses for the standards applicable both to the PUD as well as the subdivision that is going to be approved as part of this project, and again, as those are incorporated in the written report, I prefer not to read them. If you would like me to, I will do so, but we simply ask that you acknowledge that they're in the record before the report and that that's the way that the applicant believes they met those standards. At this time, we'll get rid of the lawyers and all the legal stuff that's involved in this and get into Nate Weinsma. He can make the presentation for what those townhomes are on behalf of Lexington. Nate?
Hi, good evening. I apologize, I'm fighting a cold or something here, so it might be a little hard to hear. Good evening. My name is Nate Weinsma. I'm with Lexington Homes. I'll start out with a slide here that's a little tough to read, except for the dates. The principles of Lexington and our operation have been in the homebuilding business in Chicago since, really, the late '60s, early 1970s. So, when you see our logo and it says over 50 years, we truly have been building in Chicago for that time, under the name Lexington Homes, Concord Homes, 3H Homes. They were all affiliated companies over the years. But we are a private company, strictly building in the Chicago area. And so, we're a little different than some of the national footprint builders that you'll see around Chicago, building in the suburbs. When we came upon this site, as Scott kind of gave the history, there was a good portion of this overall development that was never built upon. I think there have been previous interests from homebuilding companies like ourselves for a variety of site plans, uses that are similar, but were different. If you recall, when we came with our original concept plan, there were some very specific design comments made by the plan commission. I think the most noticeable that has been changed or addressed in some ways, in the site plan itself, the orientation of some of the buildings where we were able to turn the front facade of the homes, front doors towards Stone Circle. I know that was a specific comment from the plan commission and was certainly also a concern and comment shared by the condominium owners and residents of crossings of Geneva. So, buildings 1 and 2, as you'll see on the north side of Stone Circle, building 10, are now in orientation consistent with the condominium, the existing condominium buildings and that streetscape along the east-west portions of Stone Circle. We have 40 units in total, served by shared driveways with garages, two-car garages in the rear, and I'll get into some of the architecture later. So, the front doors face either the street or a courtyard landscaped area with shared service walks to the front doors. The, kind of serving a couple of purposes, the primary purpose is that the garages then are shielded from Stone Circle from the road. You don't see necessarily the garages from the street, and you don't have the driveway cuts and impacts of those driveways and guest parking on Stone Circle. So, the idea initially was to try to maintain Stone Circle and its perpendicular parking areas that exist today, and the parkways and sidewalks of Stone Circle, retain those in their current state, and build on as much as possible strictly lots 2, 3, and 4. This is a very simple plat comparison showing what the original plat was for the five buildings, what our proposed plat is with the 10 townhome buildings, most of which are four units. There is a three-unit building on building 1 and a five-unit on building 10, but otherwise all of them are four-unit buildings. Again, it's been designed in a way that the buildings themselves, the Again, it was, it's been designed in a way that the buildings themselves, the residents themselves, fit within the footprints of those previously planned lots two, three, and four. This is impervious illustration. You can't read the details of the data table, but while it appears to have maybe more pervious area in our plan, because there are gaps between the buildings, a little bit more green space scattered, the concentration of green space in the original plan with the footprint of the condominium buildings is almost identical to the impervious area we have in our plan. There's slightly more pervious green space in our plan, but almost indiscernible when you really calculate it down, including sidewalks and driveways and so forth. This is our proposed sales and model and signage exhibit. The plan here is to model building one, which is the three-unit building that is closest to Fisher Drive. Those models would be fenced off, furnished, fully decorated models, and connected to by a fenced, trap fence area to a sales office, which is a pod-style model or a sales office building that would sit on the footprint of building two. And that's the smaller box to the east of the model building that you see. That would be the sales office. That would stay for the duration, obviously, until we're sold out and building two has to be built, then it would be removed. The idea being that the sales traffic, the consumer, would enter into the sales office if they want to see a model home. They would walk through the trap fence area into the models and come back to the sales office. The sales office would be the access point of control from anybody parking in front of the sales office and coming in the front door. Very much kind of a retail operation where you're coming in the front door and you're in a controlled environment there. One thing I would point out is, and I'll get into it further, but we kind of began this process knowing that it was important to the residents that the traffic impacts of what we're doing have as little implication as possible on their existing streets and their existing access. So we started out proposing this temporary access drive to Stone Circle, to Fisher Drive, really to, number one, contain our sales traffic to that northwest corner and also construction traffic. And I'll get into that a little bit later, but through the evolution of this review process and approval process, that fixed access point to Fisher Drive is, at this point, going to be proposed as permanent or will be at the final design stage. With that, I'll let our traffic consultant, Brendan, give an overview of where we're at with our traffic study, and then I'll pick up back up again on the details of the PUD.
Hello, everyone. Again, my name is Brendan May, and I'm a traffic engineering consultant with KLOA. So we prepared a traffic evaluation for the 40 proposed townhomes. As part of this evaluation, we conducted traffic counts at the intersection of Fisher Drive with Heartland Drive and Stone Circle, which is the existing access that serves the existing condominiums. From there, we generated traffic for the proposed townhomes, assigned those to the intersection, applied a regional growth factor for traffic on Fisher and Heartland to develop the total projected traffic condition, and then evaluated that from an existing to a proposed condition. As part of our evaluation, we also took a look at comparatively the traffic estimated by the 40 townhomes versus the approximately 130 condominium units that were not built. So based on the findings of our evaluation, the traffic generated by the 40 townhomes will have a limited impact on the operation of the existing roadway network. The trips estimated to be generated by the townhome units are approximately 40% lower than the trips for the 130 senior housing condominiums during the weekday morning, weekday evening periods, and about 35% less than those condominiums daily. Access to the crossings of Geneva will continue to be provided via Stone Circle and its stop sign controlled intersection with Fisher Drive. This intersection does have sufficient reserve capacity to accommodate the traffic generated by the townhomes and will operate at existing levels of service. And as part of this development, as was indicated, there is the secondary access originally intended for emergency and construction, but through, as this evolved, could be used as a permanent full access, which would only enhance the access serving the site.
As we kind of proceed through the PUD documents, this is an overall landscape plan that's, highlights just the area of development that we will be constructing, which includes lots two, three, and four, but also includes a large portion of lot six, which is the common area owned by the condominium association. The next two slides here are a little bit blown up, more detail of the north area and the south area, and you'll notice a large concentration of trees predominantly along the perimeter of the site, southeast and north property lines. And that is by design, and it is also consistent with, there was a slide earlier in Scott's presentation that showed the original PUD plan, and it was actually an image of the landscape plan for the original condominium development. So we took the elements of that plan and translated them into our townhome development plan so that the entire perimeter of the site is consistent with what was originally intended and designed with the condominium development. We have our landscape architect here if you have any specific questions on the landscape The townhomes are designed to have two color palettes. Like I said, all the buildings are mostly four-unit buildings, so this is an image and illustration of a four-unit building. There is one three-unit and one five-unit. They will all be consistent in design, although there are three different models that would be integrated into each building. The overall design is consistent, however, will have two different color palettes that will interchange building to building. They're complementary, same basic window colors and things like that, some of the base. What will vary is the masonry and siding material, or the siding colors, rather. The front elevations, let me get to this slide here. This kind of spells out the materials that we intend to use. This is LP siding, which is the Louisiana Pacific Hardy comparable product for siding. So that's a composite material for siding. Masonry. LP also makes a smart trim material that will include in all the trim. You know, most townhomes of this style, if you look at them, you'll see double windows molded together on probably all three levels. We've expanded in our plans here, a lot of glass, so we've got triple molded windows in every unit, each floor, a lot of windows on the back, swing doors to the balconies, transom windows. Every end unit will have a detail of band board, box bay with triple windows, shed roofs. So some interest and detail to the side and rear elevations as well. We also have included in the slides at the back, all of the floor plans, all of the engineering plans. So if you want me or any of our consultants to refer to any of those, we can go to the detailed plans if you like. This is going back to that sales model area. And in this, I just want to specifically talk about that access point to Fisher Drive that is now intended to be a permanent access, and I call it kind of a relief valve access to Fisher Drive. It's going to function to control all of the sales traffic and all of the construction traffic during our involvement with the building of the project. We will then, we're proposing to restrict traffic at the southeast corner beyond building 10 that we would need to get to. Anything beyond building 10 going west to Heartland Drive to the existing entrance would be restricted from construction traffic. The other thing we've, in doing that and in working towards that process of a permanent access design, we've, we internally have kind of come to the conclusion that the orientation of the drive serving buildings one and two should probably change to what this design shows, to where it would come from the east side of building two, get away from that intersection and any potential conflict of people coming out of their garages, drives that would be in conflict with that permanent entrance. Makes for a cleaner flow of vehicular traffic into the development and away from the intersection before people start entering their driveways. Makes for a cleaner pedestrian flow on the sidewalks, and again, no conflict of intersections there. So this is something that we've just kind of come up with, but we wanted to show it to the plan commission. This will be submitted to staff in a final engineering detail as part of that final engineering review. The city may not agree with this design or may feel that there needs to be some changes to it, but this, we think, is a responsive revision that we think makes a lot of sense from a vehicular and pedestrian standpoint. It also, similar to our previous design, retains all of the perpendicular guest parking on Stone Circle. So there's no, what you see there as perpendicular parking is what exists today, so there'd be no change to that. And with that, we can get into questions and answers.
All right. Thank you very much. Ben, get us started.
Oh, if I may.
If you have to ask, go ahead.
I'm just looking down at my sheet here and realizing I had other things I wanted to say. Just in summary, related to the, to the townhomes that we are proposing here, they range in size from about 1,800 feet to 2,300 square feet of living space. Our intended base pricing right now is targeted in the 460s, 470s to 530s. Sale prices, we anticipate to be between 500 and 600,000. When I say sale price, I mean the base plus options and upgrades, which we typically see about 8% average, so that's about 40,000 on top of the base price range. So sale price range here, about 500 to 600,000. We expect a sales pace here of at least two to two and a half a month. Our detailed development schedule is part of our submittal, but just in simple terms, if we gain the approval of Geneva and city council next month, plan commission tonight, city council next month, it's our intent to start initial development steps here by the end of this year. What we would probably, the initial work you would see would be related to the construction of that temporary sales office, the initiation of the foundation for the model building, perhaps prep, preparation steps in that new access, point of access to Fisher Drive. The balance of what would really be our site improvement is weather-related, but I'm assuming that would probably be in earnest in 2025, next year. Construction then, vertical construction lasting based on our sellout through 2026. And then when we're done, our proposal right now is that we would, when the project is complete, grind and resurface Stone Circle, and are working with the homeowners association, the condominium association, that with their, with the portions that wrap around the west side of building five and south side of building five or lot five and the north side of lot one, that with a joint effort between both parties, we would grind and resurface all of Circle Drive at that time. So it would be our intent that when construction is complete, grind and resurface the road. Obviously, we would go through a process with the city of any removal replacement of sidewalk, curb, anything that needed to be removed, replaced, that might have been damaged, so that when this is done, there's a new Stone Circle surface and everything's During the life of construction, we would restrict construction on the south leg and west leg of Stone Circle, but once the final surface is complete and all the units are occupied, then it would be completely open, both entrances. So I think that covered everything.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Summary.
Okay, Ben, get us started.
Thank you for your thorough presentation. I have a few questions.
Sure.
So the first is, would the residents in the townhomes have access to or share any common elements with the existing condominium building, the outdoor space?
No. We have drafted and are reviewing with the association and their attorney an agreement that expressly prohibits any of those common elements and clubhouse facilities from being used by any of the townhome association. In general terms, you can see on here what we've colored in our rendering, outside of the building footprints and driveways is all part of lot six. And you can see the, there's a label for lot six to the west of building five, near the existing entrance. Lot six is basically everything that's common area outside the footprint of the five lots. So lot six is obviously shared in that the pedestrian sidewalks are all interconnected. There's no fence between townhomes and condominium, but when it comes to their amenities that they specifically maintain for their own use, that would remain the restricted use of the condominium association. The condominium association retains ownership of all of lot six. So our work within lot six, whether it be driveways, sidewalks, landscaping, all of that happens within a license agreement from them. And when it's complete, pretty much everything that you see colored, illustrated here, is the obligation of our townhome association to maintain under license from the condominium association. And then when it comes to Stone Circle, which is still part of lot six, but is the right-of-way, if you will, sidewalks, parkway, curb, and pavement of all of Stone Circle, will be a shared cost and capital reserve for the future repair and replacement between both our sub-association, townhome association, and their condo association.
So residents of both the condominiums So residents of both the condominiums and the townhomes would have access to all the property in Lot 6, not just the colored-in part?
Yes. With the exception of the, the area that's the courtyard, really, I think, is predominantly your amenity space, is that right? That, that courtyard area is restricted from any use for, by our Townhome Association residents.
All right. But the sidewalks and the walking?
Yeah.
They could walk around the building and, okay. What is your target market for these units?
It's pretty broad, but, you know, given the price point of $500,000 to $600,000, it's typically a, on the younger end of the spectrum, it's typically a dual-income, younger buyer who, who doesn't have kids. But on the, on the other end of the spectrum, we see a number of empty nester buyers that, even though it's got a lot of stairs, the product itself, the townhomes themselves, our, our average buyer is typically empty nester, whether it's on the 50s to, to late 60s. They want the maintenance-free lifestyle. They want to live in Geneva. We, we are excited about the, the idea that you're really within walking distance of Geneva Commons here and in a close distance to either bike or drive into downtown. And that's, we, we just opened a community in Morton Grove, northwest suburb of Chicago, and our average buyer thus far is probably in their early to mid 50s. And it is the same type of townhome as we're proposing here.
No basements?
No basements.
Then I was interested in your proposed change to the driveway there behind the first two buildings.
One and two.
To the north, yes.
Yes.
And I'm kind of, in my mind, trying to decide if that's a good idea or not. I see your point about traffic flow, but I also see that you've got the same situation down at the southern end of your project by Building 10, where you have a dead end and it doesn't go around.
Right.
Right now, they're, they're identically laid out. By adding, by extending that drive around to the east side of those buildings between two and three, you lose that green space and you don't have a lot of green space. Down below by Lot, by Building 10, you have the green space. I'm, I'm not sure why the, if it's going to work down there, why is it not going to work up there? I'm not sure that losing the green space is, you know, is it worth it?
Yeah. We do lose the green space between two and three.
Right.
But you gain it back on the west side of one as a landscape buffer.
Oh, that would be gone. All right. I misunderstood that.
So much greater visual setback and buffer to Fisher Drive.
All right. But less useful for the residents themselves. You know, it's not as attractive. I'm looking at, at, to what extent you can create some sense of community within this project here. I like the way you turned some of the buildings where you could. And where you have some kind of common area, like green space or even just walkways or whatever, you know, there's some chance for residents to interact and get to know each other. By putting it over there on the far west side, I think you, you totally lose that benefit of having that all the way over there. So I'm not totally convinced about that. I'm certainly open to it, but not sure.
Yeah, I, I, you know, initially, I was, it was probably more a function of the discussions with our traffic consultant on the converging intersection and shared drive to serve those seven units. So it's really that, at this point, I'm a little ambiguous, but I think it'll, that decision needs to ultimately be made between the traffic engineers and the city engineering department. I didn't initially buy into the whole idea, but I think the engineers feel it's probably the most prudent way to approach it long-term, just from a safety and, and stacking standpoint, because you gotta, you gotta imagine also that there are, is this actually a pointer? Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Okay. So you gotta imagine that this is a stop sign with a stop bar with stacking here. Same, same at this side of the intersection and this side of the intersection. So I'm, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I, I know that, you know, you start to get more than a couple of cars stacked here and you do start to potentially have a conflict there. I like, I like the idea of having the green space in front of Building 3. My sales and marketing people feel that same way, but, you know, it comes down to what's going to be the best traffic design, engineering design. And so we wanted to show that, that, that's potentially a, a change that we're working through that could be addressed at final.
I think I lean towards keeping the green space. I can't believe that seven units is going to generate that much of a traffic problem, especially when you're talking about people who are likely to be at different schedules. You're not talking about a core workforce type of resident who everybody's leaving at, at 7:30 to be at their job at 8 o'clock, whatever. This is
Yeah.
varying age groups. Some of them may retire, whatever, so that I, I just, I don't see that as being that big a deal, but I certainly defer to traffic engineers if they feel that it is important. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Tim?
Do I understand that Stone Circle is a private road?
It is.
And the maintenance of that road will be the responsibility of both the Townhome Association and the Condominium Association?
Correct.
So they're going to have to get along?
Yeah.
Okay. The units that you're identifying as the model, are you including them in the 40s?
Yes.
Okay. So you double back at the end and sell those and everything else is sold?
Yeah, those, those models would be sold towards the end and Building 2, probably at the time that we pre-sell Building 2, when that sales office has to be removed, then the models are sold, that building gets complete, Building 2 would be the last one done.
And in terms of the way the absorption happens here, do you not construct the next building until all the units are sold?
We will, we've got kind of two things in play here. I apologize. One is, we have a dirt issue here that I won't get into the details of, but when these were, when these building pads were designed and built for a future condominium building with parking on the lower level, there was some uncompacted fill that we've encountered that we will have to remove and recompact. The worst of it is in the southeast corner. So assuming, you know, we gotta wait till that's dry, we don't want it to be a mess, we'll do that in the spring, summer of next year. Ideally, we would like to go from Building 10 and work our way back to the, to the northwest entrance and, and complete it that way. At this point, our, our construction anticipation would be Building 1, probably 3 and 4, because they're the easiest to get to without dealing with the soil issue. But our pre-sales are, we will, we have, we will carry a certain number of what we call spec units that we're, we're specking and, and building without a buyer in mind or a buyer in place. But we limit ourselves to probably in a project like this, four to five specs. So we do start buildings once we have 50% sold. So if we release a building, we sell two units, we start the building. So that's really what drives our, our pre-sale and construction phasing.
Okay. Then my last point is more of an observation. It's sort of serendipitous that you're bringing this up now when rates are finally dropping. Hopefully, you know, young people and not just empty nesters will find a home here. You know, I'll stop there. Other people want to speak. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything? No?
I just had a quick question.
Yes, Rebecca.
The, the entrance, not the Heartland Drive one, but the other one. You said that's unrestricted, so it's, you can go left or right out. It's not a right in, right out?
Yes. That's, that's what's proposed, is a full, full access.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners at this point? Okay. Hearing done. We'll open up the public hearing. So we're going to hit the sheet or we're just going to call people up? Or you have, are you done with the presentation? I'll make sure you're all done. I thought you were done. Okay.
I mean, you could just ask if anyone else?
Yeah, I could do that too. Okay. Thank you. All right. So just go by the order that people signed in? Is applicant, this guy? Fred Stallwater, I believe it's, six?
No comment.
No comment? Bill Wickler?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Bill Wickler. I live at 2692 Cross Stone Circle, Unit 111. I moved into the property with my wife a year and a half ago. In the process prior to that, I've lived in Geneva and been a taxpayer here for 47 years. Prior to moving into the crossings, I did some research to find out what properties would accommodate senior housing and senior housing only, and, and finally settled on the crossings for that reason. When I was in the process of negotiating the purchase of my unit, I was assured that it would remain 55 or over, and including the additional new buildings that were unconstructed at the time. That's the only objection I have to this project. I'm sure the project is a fine deal with a, with a reasonably good builder, but it's not a 55 property, which it currently is zoned for, and that's why I moved there in the first place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
You have any questions?
I don't, I don't believe so. Thank you. Matt Dibbo? Okay.
Demir?
Demir? Yes.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Demir Latinovich, 228 Richards Street. So I'm here with an effort to convince you to require the developer to modify their plan. This is just not appropriate. From what I understand, they came in for the site plan review and they received feedback that buildings need to be oriented towards the street and they're back with the same plan. What's the point of the site plan review? One of the things that they brought up is that, that people want to live in Geneva. Well, why, why do people want to live in Geneva? Because of the character that we have, I would think. With every development that you, that you allow like this, where the buildings are not oriented towards the street, you're losing that character. It's, it is, these are not my opinions, these are facts. This is, this is well-known. They know it. I think their, their develop, or the design team knows it. These buildings are oriented to maximize the number of units for the developer. There's nothing wrong with that. But this, this layout is just not appropriate. There are 10 buildings on here. As you can see, 1, 2, and 10 face the street. The other seven do not. They have two buildings, 6 and 7, that sort of face a court, like, like a courtyard, but they're missing a third building that would actually make that into a courtyard. So it's not really a courtyard. One of the things that they said was that they want to design a plan that actually has, the garage doors are, are, you know, away from the streets, so they're not visible. But then they move, but then they orient every building sideways so you can actually see every garage door. If you drive up and down, you can see every single garage door. The other thing they said was, now you have to listen, you, you gotta listen to what they're, what they're telling you. You know, there's a lot of windows. There are on the front elevation. Did you see the side elevation that, that you're going to face as you drive up and down the street? It's, it's frustrating when you, because they know how to design this properly. It's very simple. It's not rocket science. You can design Building 8 or 9, you just orient towards the street. Same thing with the buildings up on top. You can increase the number of units within those buildings, but you have the buildings that face the street, and you have an alley all around. And that's it. You may, you, you may lose a few units, but that's, that's the nature of development. Think about living in one of these end units there. You're going to pay $600,000 to live in a unit like that, that's in the corner tucked in, in some sort of development behind Delmore. Where does your front door face? Think about that. That's your front door. Unit, that, that Building 4, pretty much every single one of those units faces nowhere. And that's your front door. Think about that, just that character, that neighborhood, that you're walking down or , or driving that street, and you're going to go into the garage doors, you're going to go in there. So when do you use that front door? I think even if you wanted to walk around the neighborhood, you're going to use the garage door, because that's where your shoes are, your, 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 your coat. I mean, what are you going to put, a grill outside, outside of that front door? What's that going to look like? I mean, it's, it's, I, it's, it's unbelievable. It's what it is. You know, a couple of things that I, that I wanted to point out is, imagine picking up trash from these units, on these dead ends. Look at how many dead ends there are. Imagine, God forbid, there's a fire in one of these dead, in the building, in the building nine. Where's the fire truck going to stage? They're not going to walk down that, or, or drive down that alley. They're going to stage it right on, on Circle Drive. Hopefully, the hydrants are down there by the building, but, but these are just such an inefficient plan that is, that is remarkable. You know, you don't have to approve this. We have good examples of quality development downtown Geneva. The Shoddean Development at 7th, there's a Townhome Development in the Historic District, there's a few developments on 31, where every single building faces the street as it should. There is absolutely no reason to approve this. It's a very simple fix. And just for the record, for the, for the attorney, all of these comments are related to the standards number five and then, and number nine within the plan development standards. And I think the most important part is that if you do allow something like this on this development, what do you think is going to come in next? Everybody's going to be doing the same thing. I mean, it's happening across the country. The unfortunate part is that no, I mean, I would think that we have community standards, that we, that we value community character, the neighborhood character, that, that you achieve with buildings that face streets. And, and the fear is that the next developer will actually do the same thing. And, and that's just unfortunate. You know, I guess I'll just say this, you know, when I was telling my wife I'm going to come and speak to this, and she asked me, what's the project? And I explained to her and said, why? Why do you care? And I guess she's right. I mean, I don't live in this neighborhood. I'm not going to live in this particular development either. But, you know, they teach us, when you see something, say something. And I feel like that's, that's what I'm doing. I'm going to, I see something wrong and I feel like I gotta say something. I'm going to, I want to raise the alarm. So I hope you guys do the right thing. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. Bonnie?
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Bonnie Heffernan. I live at 2671 Stone Circle in Unit 1, in the granite, on the third floor. I moved in seven years ago. And the reason I moved there was because I wanted to have, live in a community with 55 and over. I feel that it was given the I feel that it was given the understanding that the reason the buildings have all stopped was because of the economy and the tanking of our building industry. I think that what's happening now is that we have this piece of property that covenant builders really wants to get out of. They don't want to build anymore. And as far as condominiums are concerned, our condominiums that do go for sale in the crossings sell within one to two weeks. So I don't believe that there, what the gentleman said, that there's no reason for condominiums. I think that it is a good viable piece of property, and it's for seniors who are not assisted living yet. We are viable people that live in the community. We pay taxes, we use our restaurants, we build, we buy our groceries, all of our common, in the common areas and stuff like that. We put in our money into this. We deserve as seniors to live in a community that is for 55 and over, which is what Geneva has provided for us. And I think that if you do this particular project, not that it's a bad project, I do like, you know, Lexington builders, I've investigated them, I know a lot about them. But I feel that the community is a senior community, 55 and over. It doesn't make any sense to me how a retired person or a person in their 50s or 60s is gonna buy a three-story building without an elevator. Come on, all these stairs? Let's face it, we're all getting older, our knees are going, we play tennis, we play pickleball, we play all these different sports and stuff like that. Our knees aren't gonna last us forever, nobody's gonna be wanting to walk up all these stairs. And this is what they're building. You know, in our condominiums, we have an elevator. It takes us right from our enclosed garage that's heated, it's maintained, it's lit, it's private. We have a separate key to get into our elevator area. It's a secure building for seniors who are not assisted living. We are people. You give us the opportunity, we've paid all our debts to society. We've been in government, we've been in the military, we have been in businesses. I'm a builder by trade, so I know what's happening in this world. But I can't believe that because covenant wants to sell out their property and get the most for their money, and that's part of the American dream, but, you know, you can do a lot more for seniors in our area. There's not that many people, and there's not that many areas in Geneva that have this particular great piece of property that we have. We're right by the hospital. You know, okay, when he's talking about the entrance, okay, I live on Lot 1, okay? When you come into that property, there's a boulevard, okay? Trucks cannot make that turn. This is why they have to put in a permanent entrance, okay? Where he's going to, okay, that's fine. I have seen people in Lot 5, around where he's putting his model at, people have moved into that area in that building with a moving truck, okay? How are they gonna get out? You know how some of these big movie trucks are? Okay, I watched from my balcony, they came around, and they tried to go back out on Stone Circle. He couldn't make it, because we have a boulevard there. So what he had to do was, he had to come in front of Lot 1, back himself out, which took him over 40 minutes to back himself out onto Fisher Drive. This is why they have to put in a permanent road in there, because they can't get the trucks in. You can't turn a concrete truck in there, you can't do, if they do trusses, they can't have all those big semis come through there. They aren't gonna be able to make a turn, they need a permanent entrance. And that's why, I don't know if the building department did it or not, but they did take it back to them and say, "No, you have to put in a, the temporary entrance has to be a permanent one", because you can't make the turn on Stone Circle. You can't. He doesn't show it there. But you can see vaguely that there's a divider in between, which is like our boulevard. And there's one way in, and there's one way out. And when the movie truck tried to back out, he came, he backed out on the entrance way, not the exit. So there's a lot of things that have changed. And also, too, on Lot 6, where you see we have our gazebo and all that other stuff. Well, the thing is, too, is that our garbage trucks go into our garages, which are sloped down. How are they going to do building with their machines and their trucks and all their construction equipment and stuff? And how are these trucks gonna come in and out to service our garbage and our recycling? And also, too, if they're doing pickup for his development, how are they gonna get to their garages? Are they gonna put all that stuff on the front? That makes no sense. I just feel that, you know, it needs to be addressed a little bit more before this goes through. Thank you for your help.
All right, thank you. I believe it's Barbara Buddha?
I don't think they can hear you.
Barbara? You're okay? Okay? All right, that's fine. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter that's not on the list? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
My name is Karen Wiltsey. I was not planning to speak tonight. I live at 2692 Stone Circle, Unit 303. So I'll be right in that corner with all that. And I want you to know that right now, the way that property is used, we're all seniors, and yes, we're not in nursing homes, but many of us do have some physical limitations. I would say we're probably the medium age of our community is probably 80 or 85. We have some people who are younger. I think the youngest person in our community is 66. And so we use that driveway, I know it's half hours and half the other property, but if you go over there, you will see people walking in the driveway with their walkers and a companion. And so if this is a development with young people and young drivers, or people who are working, and they've got a gazillion things they have to do, and they've gotta get home, and they're driving quickly, it could be dangerous. So I just want you to know the composition of the people who are already living there. If this project goes ahead, there are a couple of things I'd like to say. One of them is that I'm concerned about emergency vehicles. We have, if you call your ER department, they'll know that we have the ambulance at our places often. And so you need to take into consideration access and egress for emergency vehicles. Just wanting you to think about that. And also, I'm concerned about the noise, the dirt. And I mean, that would be something, no matter what's developed, and we believe that it should be developed, that people that own the property have every right to sell the property. And so, but I would hope that if you decide to accept this proposal, that there is some provision, that they would keep the driveway clean. We have underground garages, we keep our garages cleaned. If you come, and you're welcome to come and look, they're beautiful. You could eat off our driveways, our garage floors, they're really clean. And then we go in and we go up to our units, and we don't want to be tracking mud from the street into our garages, and then into our condos. So I would hope that there would be some stipulation that they have to keep the road clean as they have their construction. And thank you for taking my comments, and I'm sorry I didn't sign up, I didn't know I was gonna talk.
That's all right, that's perfectly fine, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment at this time? Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Okay, no, not hearing anyone, we can hear from the applicant, close out.
I'd be happy to respond to a couple of those things. But I think it's beneficial for everybody to hear. As it relates to noise, there are hours of operation in the ordinance, and that'll be monitored, I'm sure, by the city. As it relates to the street, as we are there and developing and building through the project, in part of our agreement, license agreement with the condo association, there are provisions in there that we commit to a schedule of street cleaning there. Whether it's needed as, I mean, obviously, if there's an episode where something gets spilled, we clean that immediately, but a regular schedule outside of that, that will keep that street clear of any dirt, debris through the life of the project. Refuse pickup, we have been in contact with the scavenger service here, and the design and proposal on our part is that all refuse cans remain in the garages, in the private garages of the townhome owners. They only come out on collection day, and the scavenger service has agreed that they will pick those up at the individual driveways. So there won't be any collection of cans in any one area. Related to the overall design, and this is anecdotal, I don't have an exhibit to show you, but it was, in one of the iterations of concept plans that we did draw, there was an attempt made at drawing a different, taking a different approach. Mr. Demir mentioned, you know, the perimeter potentially being an alley, and all buildings facing Stone Circle. The one thing we did realize in a design that was similar to that was a lot more pavement, a lot more impervious surface area. As you can imagine, it would be single-loaded pavement with no adjoining residents on the outer part of that drive, so it kind of doubles up the driveways pavement, and eliminated a large portion of that landscape buffer area that I pointed out is predominantly trees along the north, east, and south property lines. So as nice as it would be sometimes to orientate the buildings differently, there are aspects of that that are detrimental to the overall plan. With that.
Need to talk to me.
John Kramer, who is the attorney that's been representing the condominium association owners. I apologize, I have a miserable voice for public speaking, so of course, this is my career. John Kramer, who is the attorney whispering in my ear before I got up here, he has been representing the condo association throughout the period since we appeared before this particular commission. And one of the instructions that I think we got from one of the commissioners was, "You're gonna be married to the association for a long period of time, go talk with them, find out what they're interested in, share with them your plans, go through the design of this particular configuration, and try to work out these issues associated with the road that you will be maintaining together." John Kramer and his clients have been wonderful hosts throughout this process. We have had extensive meetings. We have been documenting our efforts to work up a term sheet that would reflect both this license agreement, that would share the cost associated with preserving this and operating this private roadway. Those negotiations are ongoing. But as we have gone through this process, we have documented the issues that we have been discussing, and then we have been sharing them with David DeGroot, so that the city had a very good handle on exactly what issues were coming up between the condo association and the townhome developer, and how those particular matters have been solved. All I can tell you is that you have a very good documentary history of the interests that have been shared by the condo association as a whole. You've heard from, I think, three of the members this evening that had a particular interest either in an age restriction being maintained at this location or preservation of the roads. If you're interested in how those discussions have gone, Mr. DeGroot has a very extensive history of the documentation as we've been working through the terms of that agreement. Secondarily, your staff does an exceptional job with a planned unit development. This document that you can see that resembles a Russian novel is actually half of our zoning application. Because we have been working on this since we were in front of this particular commission, every time we submitted plans, we had to have our engineering plans, our landscaping plans, our stormwater issues resolved, we had to deal with elevations, we had to deal with building materials, we had to deal with lot coverage, we had to deal with stormwater configurations and maintaining the exemption that was originally approved for this project. As we submitted these documents, we got extensive reporting from your professional staff, because you had your fire department look at this, you had your police department look at this, you had your public works department look at it, you had all of your experts reviewing every last document that we submitted. And then they gave us comments, and then we resubmitted documents. So we've been through, over the course of the last roughly five months, an extensive process of documenting exactly what the issues are, the design issues, the engineering issues, the stormwater issues, and making sure that before the plan comes to you, it has gone through a fine-tooth comb examination by your professional staff. So I know Mr. Demir is up here, and he's indicated that he's got problems with the design. If you really want to look at what your professional design staff thinks about this particular process and the design, we encourage you to ask your staff extensively. And if you really want to dig down in the weeds, it's all in the documentation. As I say, this is just half of the documentation. I think Lexington has worked very hard to listen to the plan commission and the concept presentation that we made and the comments that we got. We did reconfigure the orientation of the houses. We worked very hard on the landscaping, we worked very hard to work with the condo association to come with agreements on those. We hope that Lexington has earned a recommendation for approval of the project. The design configuration, in terms of how ingress egress, that's something that came up at the last minute. It's one of those design configurations where we were told, you know, the staff really thinks that the secondary access should be permanent. We designed it as a temporary and perhaps an emergency. So we acknowledged, we'll look at this and we'll work with your professional staff. Once we get the approval, your design professional is gonna go through the same process. They're gonna review, do they want it between Buildings 2 and 3? Do they want it to the west of Building 1? That's something that your professional staff does in terms of the evaluation process. We will listen to them, and the agreement was that if we get the recommendation, we'll work through that particular issue, we will do the permanent ingress egress and per a design that the city staff thinks is appropriate. So with that, any other questions that you have for us as the applicant this evening?
Thank you. Do you, ma'am?
I'm sympathetic to the person who brought up that the residents of the condos are walking on Stone Circle now, and that they are concerned about their safety, should this project go forward. Now, right now, you're walking in the street, that's correct. There's no sidewalk on the west side of Stone Circle for you to walk around. You have to walk in the street.
There is a sidewalk.
There is.
There is a sidewalk.
Sir? Sir? Could you please come forward and speak?
My name is John Kimmel. My ambition is to win the lottery and buy Lots 2 and 3 and 4, and dedicate them to the condominium association, since I've lived here since 2005 in the condo association. But there is a sidewalk on the west side of Lot 5. There's a sidewalk on the east side of Lot 5, and on the east side... side of lot five and on the east side, I should say the south side. There are ample sidewalks to walk on, they're normal city sidewalks, but some people who walk with walker and walk with cane prefer to walk in the, in the street, it's much, it's much more comfortable to walk in the street.
So following up on that, and you might want to stay there if you have an additional response, this design has a sidewalk on the east side of Stone Circle that would go in, so there would be that additional walking.
There is no sidewalk on the east side.
No, but this, this design looks to me like there is a sidewalk that would go in there, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, so there would be that additional walking path available?
There's not, there's not a sidewalk on, on the, on lot six on the east side of buildings, building five.
She's just referencing the proposal will include a new sidewalk.
That's news to me.
Well, I can, I'm just looking at what.
And I've been involved in negotiations all along and I've never seen any side, I'm talking about a sidewalk that butts up against building five and I don't see one on the south side, there may be one.
We'll let the, we'll let the applicant explain it in more detail.
Go ahead.
So, so perhaps he's, I don't know how to make that clear, that it looks, it does, there is a sidewalk there on this driveway that goes around the exterior of Stone Circle, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, it's continuous all the way across, so an extra walking path would be put in so that those folks would have an alternative to walking in the street. I don't know about, if there's a problem with walkers being used on sidewalks, then that seems to me that that's something that perhaps can be addressed with the city that I don't know anything about how you design a sidewalk to make it good for a walker, but there must be maybe some, something that can be done to make that easier for folks to use the sidewalk and then they don't have to worry about walking in the street. I think walking, it's important to try to maintain that ability for folks to walk if they want to.
Sure.
So I would hate for them to lose what they feel comfortable with, but it looks to me like there would be the potential to perhaps improve the walking situation with some, some design details that I'm not familiar with, maybe the applicant could comment on that?
Yeah, to your point, excuse me, there is proposed a sidewalk along the southeast and north sides of Stone Circle, the whole perimeter would be sidewalk. And I, I don't know if this was in particular to responding to these types of concerns, but the design of the sidewalk here, as you, as it traverses these shared driveways, the city engineering department has specified that they, that the sidewalk be the predominant design, so the sidewalks will traverse all the way through the shared drives. So there'll be pavement on the street side and pavement on the driveway side, the building side, but the, the concrete, the concrete sidewalk will be continuous all the way through. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense.
Yeah.
And I can appreciate that perhaps, the next thought of some, the part of some of the residents might be that crossing the driveways is, is perhaps nerve wracking, maybe there could be signage at the end of each of those driveways reminding the residents of the townhomes that there's a senior crossing or, or, I don't know, whatever would be effective so that they would have the right of way, there would be a reminder to, to be careful. I know, I watch where we, where we live now, I mean, in a single family home subdivision, the driveways are much more frequent than they are here and, and you have to watch for the, the little kids on tricycles that are below where you can see sometimes in the cars and all that, so it's not unheard of to, to think about the protection of whoever's using those sidewalks and try to do something to make them safer.
Yeah.
Maybe something could be done.
I think it helps to have the concrete be the predominant design.
Right.
Criteria that goes through all those, those drives. This plan shows again kind of the, where the stop bars would be, and this is an example of what we're doing in the overall design besides the sidewalk that'll ring Stone Circle. The existing sidewalks that are stubbed, like for instance here, and I'll show it on both sides here, near building five here at the northeast corner of building five, there's a stub to stone. If, if, if this design change doesn't happen, that will continue and connect up to the north side, the new sidewalk. But the design is that, you know, any, anywhere where we're connecting to existing sidewalks, to new sidewalks, we're creating a crossing, even if there's not one today, because for instance, there's no sidewalk on the north side of Stone Circle to connect to, so it just ramps to Stone Circle itself, which is probably why people reach the street and then walk in the street. That'll continue all the way through and connect up to wherever there's a sidewalk. So in the overall plan, if you look closely, you can see several of those where between buildings one and, one and five and 10, there's a crossing there, there'll be crossings on the northwest side of building five, across from one and two and building five, so there's several of them. Near buildings six and seven, where the courtyard is, anywhere there's an alignment of a sidewalk on either side that's perpendicular to the road will be connected.
Okay, well, I would like to, that all sounds good. I see the potential for this to be a plus for the residents of the condominiums as long as every effort is made to maximize compatibility between their lifestyle and what will be, be built here. It seems like extra effort could be made so that there are some gains for the folks in the condos. I don't know if there's anything besides the sidewalks where there could be some pluses for the folks in the condos, but if, if there are, those efforts should be made.
I had a question on that subject, so is part of the concern that if I, that there's not now a sidewalk on the, what would be the west side of, of the driveway between, between Stone Circle and the east side of building five?
Yeah, that's where it looks like there isn't one.
There are, from the courtyard, there are two stubbed sidewalks here that would be connected across. I think, I think what they were referring to is there is no sidewalk on the east side of building five now that would be on the west side of Stone Circle.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, so is that, so there's nowhere else to walk right now?
On the inner part of the circle.
On the inner part, and, and how is that impacted then by the construction until, until a new sidewalk is built?
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's, that's a concern of ours too, is, it's a street and it will be used for deliveries and, and construction, but this, the improvements to Stone Circle and the sidewalks will be constructed as soon as possible and, and those connection crosswalks.
Sure, and that'll all be a great improvement, I guess the concern is what, is there, is there any, anything in the, that can be done during the, during the construction phases, you know, maybe temporarily?
I think, you know, keeping it swept and clean, you know, the hour, I don't know when people are typically walking, but when our, whenever the ordinance hours require us to shut down in the evenings, we can't start till I think it's 7:00 AM, seven to four? Seven to eight, okay. So, outside of that, no, I, I can't think of anything that would restrict vehicle use of the street in, in lieu of pedestrian use, that's a tough one.
So how, oh, excuse me, go ahead, are you finished, Mike?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Could you clarify how, how soon that sidewalk could be put in, could that be?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure on the overall development schedule. I think it, it, you know, when we build these share, you know, when, when the, when the dirt work is done on those pads that I said need to be undercut, there will be some, some preliminary land development, if you will, but the first phase of the development, and it'll all be built in one phase, is to get these shared drives in. And so if the shared drives are in and the sidewalk crossings are there, I, I tend to think this sidewalk around the perimeter will be part of that first phase of development because there's already the curb in place for Stone Circle, there's already that parkway there. So once that first initial phase of development happens, that sidewalk will go in. These sidewalks between buildings that serve the front doors will go in as the buildings are built, but.
That's not a concern to, to these folks.
But that, that perimeter sidewalk will be part of the, the initial land development.
Okay, so, so it's not that it will come in incrementally as you get to those buildings, it's going to be done in one step and it would be a first phase?
Excuse me, can I speak for a minute?
Yes, you can. Please, you need to come identify yourself.
I'd like to thank you for your time and these gentlemen who are building or hoping to build.
Ma'am, could you please?
Did a good job, presentation and so forth.
Ma'am, ma'am, could you please identify yourself?
Excuse me?
Could you please say your name and who you are?
Oh, sorry.
Just for the record.
I thank you for all your time too, but my name is Schwer, S-C-H-W-E-R, Pat, and I live at 2692 Stone Circle and have for 10 years and loved every minute, the people are just lovely there, really. But when we bought the place, we were told that it was going to be 55 and older and, and we could live there till they took us out. And so we enjoyed every minute so far, really have. And like I said, the people are wonderful, they're from 55 to 99. And she would, when you see her, she'd be beautiful, she's a lovely lady. But anyway, getting back to the serious part, I want to tell you that we can't take all this because it's so hard for the people backing out, going in, and it's dangerous. And now they're all afraid that they're going to get hit by a car when they walk and stuff and they walk in the street because it is so hard, you know, with the walkers and, and sometimes they're lucky enough to have a friend walk with them. But I, you know, I see that you are very interested and very earnest and stuff and I appreciate that, but please think about it because it's going to be a terrible move. We've had 14 different ladies and gentlemen move because of the fear of this predicament we're in. And that's so sad, they had to go into nursing homes, I agree with that, but it wasn't really the time they wanted to do it and they had to do it because of safety. The trucks would be too dangerous for them. But I thank you again for your time and I hope you think about it.
All right.
Take care.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
The trucks and that safety issue during construction would occur even if you were building another 55-plus project, so I don't see a way around that particular issue unless you say that there will not be any other development on that property, which wouldn't be legally possible. I'm rooting for you.
Anything else? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I said, I'm not sure if this is the right time for the question, but you know, there's, you talk about the license agreements or agreements between the, between the parties and I'm, you know, so I've had experience like with a subdivision, for example, where, you know, recorded REAs have to be in place as contingent of the subdivisions, and I realize this isn't this, but how, how do those things become an assurance going forward if something is, is passed tonight, that, that they are in fact executed to the satisfaction of both sides?
This is, this is one of the creatures of private roads, it's, it's that simple. And most roads that you're dealing with in these subdivisions are public streets and certainly one of the first topics I raised with your professional staff is, would the city like to take possession and ownership and have the roadway dedicated, if that's what the condo association, and the answer was no, we really would not prefer to do that. So we have pushed forward with the idea this, this has to be a private roadway. There are legal rights associated to the road in that when the subdivision was created, they recorded a reciprocal easement agreement that essentially gave ingress egress rights to all of the lots in the subdivision. So we, we have the ingress egress rights. I will tell you that if you don't do anything, a court eventually is going to say how you're going to share the cost on this thing. So it's in the best interest of both the condo association and the townhome association to negotiate an agreement as to how you're going to maintain the road. And that's the day-to-day maintenance in terms of snow removal and upkeep and cleaning it and things of that nature. And then there's the long-term one where every once in a while you have to completely rebuild a road, which is a big dollar number. Because they're a condo association, they have to have capital reserves under the condo act, so we've got all of these entwinements that are really private agreements. I don't know how you would put something into an approval of a planned unit development that would force people to have a private agreement between two entities, I don't think that you can do that as a legislative function. So I, I think that in this case, because we have a private ingress egress, you're going to start with the assumption that it's in our best interest to negotiate that and we've worked very hard and we think that we've got a very clear pathway forward, we just have to document that and John Kramer is here this evening, I think he can address that element.
Good evening, my name is John Kramer and I've been representing the association with the negotiations with Covenant Construction and with Lexington Homes, and we thank you for your time and for hearing from the residents that you can, heard tonight, love their, their neighborhood, so thank you. I would echo what Mr. Day said, we have been working together, just big, big picture at this point in time, the, the letter of intent has been, gone back and forth for a few months now, we're getting close, but we're, we're not quite there yet. And we're still waiting on the license maintenance agreement to get that hammered out. So again, I'm not saying that we're not making progress, we have made progress, definitely, but we're, nothing has been quite finalized yet, but hopefully will, would be in the near future. So that's kind of big picture from where those negotiations stand.
Thank you. Yes, please. Ma'am, please come forward to get the microphone, because the people are on television watching, so.
One of the things that I think needs to be addressed is that the property on, in, in front of where they're building the model, okay, where they have the, the greenery behind it, that's a farm that nobody will sell to get access off of, off of Williamsburg. On the back end of it, where the other greenery is, is the hospital stuff. The hospital has denied any access to this area from their property, so we're kind of locked in. The only way they can get in and out is from Fisher Farm, Fisher Drive. So this is where the problem becomes, this is why this little piece of property is gold. We're in a little niche, niche there that is because of Covington stopped building the condominiums when it, when, when, when our economy crashed, it's, it's just, they need to sell this, they want their money out of it, so they're, they're talking about selling it to a builder. We've had three builders come in and each one of them has been denied or, or has left because we would not budge on the 55 and over. That being said, our, our, our association feels that it's going to happen, we're, we're in a little problem and this is the, the land that they want and it's going to be built. So we have to take into consideration a lot of the factors. So we have to take into consideration a lot of the factors that you just brought up, our safety, our cleanliness of our area, the location. So our fire trucks and our ambulances. Because when the fire trucks come, they come with an ambulance. That's two big vehicles. So you need to have access around that whole perimeter, even when they're building, you know? So we need to address all that. This is something that, you know, I understand where you're coming from, but I think that it still needs to be get more addressed in the particulars of, why isn't the hospital selling their land? Why isn't the farmer selling it? The only way they're doing it is to have us come in off of Fisher Drive. That's the only way in and the only way out. Be careful with that, you know? And as far as the money is concerned, our condominiums are going for $500,000. I mean, condominiums are selling. And it's, I mean, my condominium has increased tremendously in the seven years that I've been there. But what happens if the economy tanks with our election? What's going to happen if they don't build all those houses, all those townhouses? What's going to happen then? Are we just going to have all this land that's nobody, you know, he starts with this and then it ends? That's not fair to us either. There's no guarantees in life. We have to remember that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, is a motion in order at this point to close the public hearing? I see no further comments?
I see no further comments, so.
Moran, I would move to close the public hearing.
Mataskill second.
Moved and seconded. Anna, please call the roll.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slufka?
Slufka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Mataskill?
Mataskill, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of staff now?
Of course.
Yeah, so the way this is originally set up with the secondary use after a certain period of time, doesn't the property owner now have a right to the 55? An overrule being dropped? I mean, it seems to me that that's a moot point. You can do that.
The way the PUD was constructed was that if the primary use was not built within the first two years, they had the right to petition for the secondary use. I believe there was a second layer in the PUD that said if it wasn't constructed within eight years, it automatically, the secondary use automatically became by right. We don't have either of those situations. We have partially constructed primary use and the remainder not built. So, yes, I think that the original PUD allowed for the secondary use pending a petition from the owner.
Could you explain that second part again? You said we don't have either of those situations?
Right, the PUD contemplated, I think, an either-or situation. Either an age-restricted community being constructed on the entire Neighborhood 9 property. And in the event that that didn't happen, then there would be a secondary use. There would not be an age restriction.
So, but it wasn't completed, so it, right?
Right, so we have a situation that the PUD did not contemplate, I guess.
So then it's not automatic that the 55 and over rule can be discarded?
We believed it was necessary to file the petition to allow for the secondary use.
But it was never guaranteed in perpetuity to always be the over 55. There were these other pieces that came in that said, in this case and in this case, we don't have to go with that, right? But neither of those things happened?
Right.
Right, that, I'm just, so it was always on the table that it may not be, that there was the possibility that it was not going to be an over 55 community?
Right, I think the difficulty lies in the fact that we have partially constructed and is age-restricted. And obviously residents bought into that community.
Okay, thank you.
So it sounds like the question is, do we think it's reasonable to apply what seemed to be the original intent of the PUD in an either-or situation to this situation where it's partial? Where it's partially occurred? Does it make sense that the first part happened in part and many years later, the second part has still never happened? You know, well beyond all the original milestones?
Tim?
As I understand it, there are two requests this evening. The first is the rezoning, which technically isn't a rezoning because it's already the R7 multi-family zoning. And it's simply a request for repurposing of a portion of it, the nature of which has been in the subdivision plot for over 20 years. So I don't see any surprises here. The applicant is here. He is requesting this change. We're not obligated to grant the change. But he made clear when he stepped up that he is one of two applicants. He is the seller and contract seller-owner who needs this portion of the request granted as a condition for the contract buyer to go through with the deal. And then it's the contract purchaser who is making the second request for final plan of subdivision. And there's no surprises here. This has been on the books for over 20 years. And it would also point out that, as I read the ordinance, they have the right to petition to put in 130 units. They're asking for 40. I think that's a dramatic downsizing and frankly a benefit in terms of traffic flow, personnel movement, construction timeline and efficiency. So that's where I'm at with this.
Mike?
Mr. Day mentioned that, well, these are two separate issues and we're voting on them separately, correct? But that they come in together. So the first request could be approved and the second request not? Is that... I share a lot of the same things that Tim has just indicated. I think that, I think it's more than reasonable to consider the rezoning at this point. I think that, I think they've done a nice job with the site plan. They've done, well, I guess I don't want to maybe get into that at this point. But I'll just speak to the rezoning part. And I do think it's more than reasonable to consider the rezoning of the property at this point.
Adam?
Under the R7, what's the height restrictions for R7 zoning?
I believe it's 35 feet and then up to 60 feet with a special use permit.
And is it correct to assume that under the PUD that they do have 130-odd additional units that could be built under the PUD, correct? But assuming that it'd be age-restricted?
Right, under the final PUD approval that was granted in 2003, there was an additional 132 units on the remaining lots for age-restricted.
Yeah, I agree with both comments that were made that I think over 20 years have elapsed. And obviously, if the economics worked for senior condominiums, then someone would have, would have attempted to bring something forward. I also think the fact that they're only looking to build 40 versus much more that's allowed under the PUD is important, I think, for the traffic and the safety of the seniors that are living in the senior condominium. So that's what I have to say.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, ma'am.
I agree with Adam, Mike and Tim. And I think that, but I am sympathetic to the desires of the residents to remain in the 55-plus exclusive neighborhood. But I honestly think if that gross permitted number of units came in and they were even 55-plus, that you would find with that huge increase in density that your safety issues would be more dramatic than they are with the 40 units here. Most of the folks in your, who would be moving in would also have cars. There would be much more traffic. There would be much larger buildings. Driveways would be more significant. I just think that the density works in your favor, in everybody's favor here. So, yeah, I think this is...
Be a very tight site with 130 units in it.
It sure would.
Mr. Chairman, is a motion in order at this point?
I think for, certainly the first one, I think we've discussed.
I'll make two motions, but perhaps I'll stop you after the first if...
Yeah, I think we need to talk a little bit more about the second one, but I think...
Thank you. Regarding the crossings at Geneva subdivision, generally located east of Fisher Drive and south of Williamsburg Avenue, identified its permanent index numbers 12-05-405-001, 002 and 006, I make a motion to approve the applicant's request for rezoning of the site for the secondary use of non-age-restricted multi-family development as reviewed pursuant to Section 11-14-3F of the zoning ordinance and subject to the findings of fact of city staff.
Slufka second. Moved and seconded. Anna, the roll, please.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slufka?
Slufka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Mataskill?
Mataskill, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
And Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate to make the second motion at this point? Was there a comment? I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Yeah, I think we may still want to talk about it a little bit.
Yeah, there's some things here.
Well, I know, but I wanted to get there.
It's on the floor, you can then talk about it.
So to what extent, see, there's design changes that we've talked about, but I don't feel like they're solidified enough to necessarily specify in an ordinance. And I don't know if you can put them in in a general way and then leave it to staff to work it out with the other parties or whether we have to get down to be more specific.
Are you talking about conditions for approval?
Yes.
Okay, so you can make a recommendation on a motion and offer conditions for the city council's contemplation. But obviously, what the conditions are is whether they can be actually attached to the motion or not. So what do you have in mind?
All right, so specifically thinking about the design of the common elements so that they're as comfortable for the senior population as possible. Things like the sidewalks and signage and crossings and all that sort of thing. But I think those are things for people who are design professionals to work out. So can we put in something, would it be appropriate that the condition is that those factors be considered? Or do we have to have something specific that says crossings have to be X feet wide?
I don't think the latter is anything you really want to get into because there's code provisions that are already in play. I mean, if you have suggestions for what you heard counsel for both parties, that they work together to make as many accommodations that work for both parties, I mean, I think that's a general sentiment you can offer. But I don't think you want to get too deep in the weeds on provisions that already probably exist in our codes with respect to design specifications.
I wasn't sure since this was private street whether or not that affected those kinds of things.
They, well, there are some common requirements that Geneva requires, whether it's a dedicated road or not. So again, I think you can make conditional suggestions, if you wish, that the parties do their, offer their best efforts to work together and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the second motion, if I may.
Okay.
I would move to approve the applicant's request for final planned unit development and subdivision approval reviewed pursuant to Section 11-14-4F of the zoning ordinance, subject to the finding of facts of city staff and subject to, and these conditions were actually the city staff report, which is where these are coming from. The first...
Tim, really quick. If I may repeat, condition number two has been satisfied?
The off-site trees?
The off-site trees issue, yes. Sorry, thank you.
Then, subject to, A, the proposed emergency second access point shall be made a full secondary access point. And B, the final engineering shall be approved prior to building permit issuance. And to Commissioner Evans's comment, we encourage city staff to continue to work and perhaps come up with some unique ways to accommodate the folks that live across the roadway here.
Is there any consideration you want to talk on the drive up on...
Yeah, I was just thinking about that.
You need a second.
Yeah, okay, well, let's have a second that we can discuss. Slufka second? Second, okay, we'll discuss.
Yeah, I would, again, this is kind of ambiguous. I would like staff and the parties involved, the applicant, to retain the green space between Buildings 2 and 3 unless there is a significant demonstrated advantage to, yes, to not doing so.
So I'll just note...
So this is something that staff has looked at briefly. It's something that our emergency services have recommended, the second access?
Not the second access. I'm not, I don't have any concern about the second access onto Fisher Drive.
We're talking about the drive.
I'm talking about whether the drive runs between Buildings 2 and 3 or is over by, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. That helps a lot, thank you.
I don't have any problem with the second access.
Yeah, I mean...
So, this is just a recommendation? This is just, this isn't something that we're saying has to be satisfied, right? Because I don't necessarily think that. So I just want to, I'm asking to, for, is that right?
I'm not even sure what exactly the commissioner's trying to attach yet. So, and I think you even proffered that it's ambiguous.
Yes.
Obviously, that makes it challenging. So if we're asking a recommendation, we need to have some parameters.
I would just, to Commissioner Holloman's point...
That is not part of my motion.
Right.
Okay.
Or seconded.
I mean, this would be amending the motion, some, the existing motion.
Correct, we'll, right, right. And if that amendment would jeopardize the entire motion, then I would drop that discussion.
Okay.
I would just offer that staff has only received this proposal for a few days and we have not had a chance to get into a detailed review of the second access becoming a full access point and kind of flipping that access drive to the other side. It's definitely something we will look at in detailed final engineering and provide a recommendation onto the city council.
So has safety seen it at all from the city?
We have just routed it yesterday or the day before.
They've seen it very briefly. Fire has taken a brief look and has recommended approval of this design. But other than that, I haven't received any additional feedback.
So procedurally, council, I think, what's being asked is, will I entertain an amendment to my motion?
But I'm not sure what the amendment is yet. It hasn't been proffered and...
Just trying to follow along with Commissioner Mims, Mims Evans here. Just trying to follow along with Commissioner Evans here, I'm not inclined to go along with that, so I think the procedure would be to vote on the motion as seconded. If it fails, then Commissioner Evans can make another motion with that recommendation.
Yes, but first, I don't think an amendment has been even offered yet. And seconded, typically what we would do at council is vote on the amendment to see if it attaches or not. So if there's an amendment, it needs to be proffered, seconded, and then it would be voted on to see if it attaches.
I like that order of things because it allows the amendment to not sink the whole motion, so that's good.
Then I would call for a vote on my motion.
No, we need to do it the other way around, understanding you. If there's going to be an amendment, if I'm going to make it.
You have to make the motion to amend first, and someone has to second it, so...
Correct.
I don't mean to put pressure on you, but you have to offer it.
I understand. I was disagreeing with Tim putting his motion forward right now. I'm thinking if there's a reasonable way to word this.
Can I offer something?
Yes, you can.
I mean, there's always, there's always a proposition you can suggest that staff offered to council on the ultimate, you know, planning and zoning would like the council to take particular notice of X, Y and Z, or green space maintenance, whatever it is, and not make it a specific condition, but make it part of the record that they keep in mind and maybe address it at the council level.
I'm fine with that.
Trying to be helpful. Sounds good.
Then Tim can go ahead with his motion.
Yes, I would ask for a vote of my motion, completely agreeing with that approach to Commissioner Evans's concerns.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you want to call the roll?
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slufka?
Slufka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Mataskill?
Mataskill, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Okay, so we will, we'll take this to council, upcoming council meeting. We will correspond with the official date for that. Yeah, thank you, guys.
We're listening, so any conditions that you guys have...
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for everyone participating. Thank you. Okay, I got public comment? There's an actual public here. I don't think anybody wants to comment.
Yeah, they're leaving.
I'll give them a second. I think we're good. I don't think there's going to be any public comment, so...
There's no more public.
We're good. Let's move on.
All right, so just, I just have one quick note. So our next meeting is going to be on October 10th. We've got three items on the agenda for that meeting. We've got a porch variation request at 117 McKinley Avenue. We have a preliminary and final PUD request for the Campbell Courtyard project, which is on the corner of Campbell and Third Street, the southwest corner. And then we have a proposed text amendment from Community Development Department for accessory dwelling units. For accessory dwelling units. So those will all be coming on our next meeting, which again, October 10th.
Just two things. I read in the paper the other day that the applicant that wished to build the Stell Tower over in Eagle Brook has taken this matter to federal court and is suing the city. Has the city responded? It's too early in that proceeding. I assume it's going to defend its position.
The city will defend its position. We are not under a time constraint yet because we have not officially been served, but I suspect that's going to happen tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, council. And then my other one was just an inquiry, is the lot next to what I call the 7-Eleven, there's been a lot of activity over there lately? Is there a project that's going to start that we know of?
So, not, we haven't received any formal application. I believe they were finalizing their remediation of the site.
Grading it, right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good thing. Thank you.
All right, that's it? Nothing else? Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you.